... meeting for September 19th to order. Stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Busgrove.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next order of business is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
So move Mr. Chair to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
Good morning Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items favor removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of September 2nd, 2014. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $2,788,618.17. Number seven is approval of the Chairman's signature on a letter expressing concerns over the PACE law land. Number eight is to schedule a public hearing on October 7th, 2014, for general fund supplement SP 14-005 for the economic assistance budget. Number nine is to approve the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks Services contract slash agreement for the Hilltop parking lot as submitted by the Highway Department. Number 10 is to recognize the volunteers for the month of 2014 as submitted by the HR Department. And at this time, I'd respectfully request to pull number seven, please.
Okay, number seven has been requested to be removed. Any others?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Alan, Alan, I see you're here. Do you want me to pull number eight?
Yeah.
Is that why you came, so you could talk to us?
To be available if you give a question.
All right.
That was kind of a precautionary.
Yeah.
Okay, item seven has been requested. Any others? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with item seven being removed.
Your second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item seven.
Item number seven. I simply forgot to add the Honorable Governor Dugard on that copy list, so I would like to amend that letter to add him on there as well.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
After we had the second from Commissioner Chapman, I wonder if we should not also send a copy of that to Jeff Volk, Secretary of Game Fish and Parks. They're gonna have a lot to do with that situation.
Does he wish to make that, add that to the amendment?
I would like to do that if it's okay with the...
Is it acceptable with the second? So the amendment will send the letter to the Governor and Game Fish and Parks. Any other discussion on the motion?
Well, as it relates to the, to the letter, you know, under the question that we had about, about law enforcement, you know, one of the, one of the, one of the things that I had suggested was that, to see if they would sign a, a, an agreement that, that land would, would fall under state jurisdiction. That's what a lot of other states have done. I think the tribes could, could agree to that if they wanted to, then place it under state jurisdiction, and then most of these questions wouldn't be an issue other than the taxation.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to put that in the letter or wait and get their response and then throw that out.
What you, what you wish.
Mr. Chair, since we brought the Governor's name into this, I guess it's probably all right under the, under the motion to say that, I had a chat with the Governor in period the other day, and he told me that if this property was adjoining or close to the proximity of the borders of the current reservation, he would, he would support it. But since it's not, he will not support this. And that's his exact answer to me.
What are you gonna do now?
Could you add something in your letter to that effect?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I will amend number...
I'd like to...
Number three.
Add that added if we could.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we, we have a motion, and Karen, would you like further wording in the motion relative to what Commissioner Holloway's added?
No, I'll have it, I'll be after.
Yeah, Holly, if, if you get with, with the State's Attorney, when I was visiting with him about that, he had this, the federal code number that allows for that kind of a jurisdictional agreement.
Okay.
So if you could get with him, you could get the verbiage to put in there, okay?
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, I think we have consensus on adding the wording to the law enforcement section, and then we have a motion to amend with copies going to the Governor and Game Fish and Parks. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item is item 11, exit interview. So are you gonna interview us, or we're gonna interview you?
Give and take. Morning.
Morning.
You should have a couple letters in the packet that I turned in for, for Holly to give you guys. One is there, is on Pennington County's letterhead. That's our representation letter. That's the one I need the Board Chairman to sign. It just gets some things in writing that were discussed over the course of the audit and, and just our, our standard form letter that we have signed at the end of the audit. Any questions about that, I can try to answer them, but just like I said, it just gets some things in, in, in writing that were kind of discussed over the course of the audit. I've got the original here. Julie's already signed that copy.
Can you pass this down? Can you pass these down?
As far as the audit goes, the report should be out. Last I talked to my manager, Russ, he said he was hoping to have it out by today, but they must not have got it done. I know you guys got a deadline with one of the bond agreements, I think, or something that has to be done by the 25th next week, so we should be able to get it. Their plan is, was to get it done this week. They evidently didn't, but hopefully it'll be out next week, and then there'll be an electronic version available that you can submit to your, your bonding company. So as far as the prior audit goes, there was a comment in the prior audit in regards to the distribution of the motor V money to the secondary road fund. That's all been implemented, so that comment has been removed from the report. I think moving forward, I think everything looks like the percentages have been adjusted the way they're supposed to be, and the money's been distributed the way the state laws say. So the report itself, for this year, there's no comments in it, no findings. It's a clean opinion, which means the financial statements were fairly presented. I told you during the entrance conference, we took a look at the federal grants. We didn't have any problems with any of that. We had some oral things, I think we discussed with some of the officials, but nothing significant or serious enough that we had to disclose a report in the audit report. So that's a good thing. We got a good report. So the other letter that you have in your packets is our management letter. Kind of puts some things in writing. They're more just like oral comments, but, but we put them in this management letter. They don't go in the report. As you can see, it kind of goes through three areas. One is as far as the internal controls that are in place for the county, any violations of laws or, or grants or contracts or anything, and then any potential audit adjustments that we had. And we didn't have any deficiencies as far as the grants, like I just said earlier, or internal control problems. We didn't have any problems with anything like that. We did make a few adjustments to the annual report that was published. Some things with this new GASB 54, and reporting of equity has been giving us fits. I mean, it's been hard for us to understand, let alone trying to get the entities to figure out how to report it. So it was just some reclassification issues we had, mostly with the, with the equity section of the balance sheet. So nothing real major or serious, didn't change the bottom line of anything or anything like that. So we also took a look, I think I told you when I was here for the entrance conference, we ran out a couple people to take a look at the new software system that you had, and they didn't seem to see any problems with that. They thought Springbrook should be a good piece of software. We worked with it, you know, as far as the vouchering system, and, and we were able to test that online, looked at that, and it seemed to be working pretty well from what we seen. So, but with that came a little extra time. I don't know, Russ said today, I think there's 75 to 100 extra hours, I think, for the audit report, or for the, for the billable time in the report. So if you see the bill, it's gonna be a little higher than it was last time. But hopefully, moving forward with the new system, hopefully that'll, over the years, it'll, it'll pay off that way. So, other than that, I really don't have anything else. Said it's gonna be a clean report, and like I said, hopefully it'll be out next week. So...
On the second page of your letter...
Yep.
There's, there's something here that says, about mid, mid paragraph, "Internal accounting controls over financial reports for the year 2013 were inadequate resulting in inaccurate and incomplete information being presented to the users." What's that all about?
That's those adjustments that I talked about. That's the, the adjustments we made to the financial statements, and it's some standard language we've used when we've got reporting errors in the financial report and the audit report, or the annual report, I guess, that was prepared. And all we're recommending is to try to strengthen the internal controls, the review process that goes into putting the annual report together.
Okay, can you speak a little bit of English?
What's that?
It was the reclassification of, of Roman Bridge, primarily.
Right, yeah. It was that equity section I was talking about earlier, the potential, they weren't potential adjustments, they were actual adjustments I made to the financial statements. I think there was three or four adjustments. I can't remember. I think that was all there was, just three or four of them.
Yeah. You used different labels.
Yeah, and it's just, it was just a reclassification. The language that's in our recommendation, I know it sounds a little strong, but it's, it's just more about the review process that goes into putting the annual report together. You know, and, and in the last couple of years, like I said, with this GASB 54, GASB is the, the people that govern how we report the annual report, Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And they put in this new statement 54 here a couple of years ago, and they changed how we report equity.
So where's that annual report go?
It gets published in the paper, and then a copy gets filed with our office, and then that's what we come in and audit and test. I mean, we start out with, with the receipts and the vouchers and work our way through the system, and ultimately trace those to the, this annual report that's prepared.
Do we get a copy of the annual report, Julie?
The financial report?
We have, we get them every year. I don't know that we've...
I don't know that we've ever filed them with you. They're online.
They're on the...
I guess I'm just sitting here listening and, and kind of some of the things I heard down at the state convention, too. It sort of seems like we should have a summary of the annual report as a commission, and are we supposed to approve it?
You're out there.
But it'd be nice to have the auditor explain it, what, how that, you know, how you've done that, you know, present it, and we, we accept it.
You don't accept the audit report? That's done by, by the auditor?
I know, but we're responsible for it, and we don't have any explanation of it given to us. We're responsible, so I guess I'd like to see that.
I'm not sure what's all in statute, I guess. I know statute requires it to be published and requires it to be submitted to our office.
And, and I'm just seeing as, as, in the interest of working well as a county, it just seems like we should know.
We do one, our, my office does one every year. If anybody wants to come down. They certainly may. It's published on the, on the webpage.
So would you like each one of us to come individually and have you do that, or would you prefer...
Sure, you can do that.
You, you wouldn't prefer that you just present it to us publicly, all five of us?
I can do that at your request, but it's nothing that you approve.
Okay. Okay, I'm fine with that, but I do think there needs to be some presentation that we are aware of what's being sent in on our behalf.
I would disagree that it's on your behalf, but...
But we're responsible for the financial in the ultimate. We, I mean, we're supposed to be...
You set the policy, but, but the financial report's done by, by the auditor. But you can certainly look at it online. We've never had a board do it, but...
I'd like to see a copy of it, and since we don't have a computer down here for me to look it up on, Holly, could you make me a copy and put it on the agenda for the next commission meeting so we can discuss it?
It's not a matter of discussing, it's just a matter of us knowing what's going on as a commission.
And as far as what got published versus, or what you look at, I don't know what your supplier, but the numbers will be different in our audit report. That's what I'm saying.
Just by those few adjustments.
Yeah, those couple adjustments that we made, and that's just in that equity section. But I mean, if you try to compare the two, that's where, that's where there'd be some differences, I guess.
It's a huge document, but we can definitely forward it over, just like we do the budget, the budget reports.
I guess I'd just like a summary or something, just so I feel comfortable if somebody ever says something to me, you know?
Mr. Chair. The only thing I'd have to say about it is, is that the Pennington County taxpayers are damn lucky to have the current elected officials running Pennington County, and specifically the auditor and the registered deeds, who there was a concerted effort by the mayor and others to get rid of them. And yet, God help us, next year, when you did your audit, if that hadn't happened.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't have anything else other than to thank Julie, her staff, and everybody else that helped with the, with the project. You know, it's a pretty big undertaking to do this audit, like I said, so. And because it's in such good shape, makes our job a little easier, so. I've been in some that aren't as good as, aren't close to this, they're meant, so helps our job.
Helps the bill, too.
Yeah, exactly.
So we need a motion to authorize my signature?
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, and thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item 12, item 12A, and, did you want me to sign that for you?
Good morning, Janet Saylor, Pennington County Treasurer. Before you, you have a reconvenance for Myrna Adams' property. Her son Sean is here today. Myrna passed away, and Sean would like this property reconveyed back into, it would have to be reconveyed back into his mother's name, just like the deed was filed, so that he can proceed with anything that he needs to do. Sean is here today. If, if, I think he would like to address the Board. I've, I've listed everything out as far as filing fees, taxes, search fees, State's Attorney, and everything for the commission.
Mr. Chair, Janet, I'd just like to ask you a question before you start. Is there anything that, that pops up in your, your mind that would prohibit us from doing exactly what he'd asked us to do?
Absolutely not. Sean's aware that the deed does have to go back into his mother's name. That's the only way we can do the reconvenance, but my position and the Board's has always been, we're not in the business to take people's property. We'd rather put it back on the tax roll and have them pay the taxes.
Okay.
My name's Sean Adams, and like Janet said, it's just my intention to get this settled up and move forward and get it first in her name, and then I can go through the process of getting it transferred into my name and go on from there.
Okay, any questions by the commission? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the reconvenance of the property as presented for Myrna Adams, ID number 2600.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Sean. Thank you very much. Thank you, Janet. Item B.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, and I don't know if the commission wanted to discuss this, or it's the packet that I put together for you per your request on the mobile home moving permits, on the Treasurer's Office procedure.
I'd like to discuss it.
Me, too. I have some questions.
You have the floor.
Well, it, as I read your, through your letter and read some of these statutes, it appeared that the dealers do have to get a moving permit. Isn't that what it says?
They, they don't have to, the dealers don't have to get a, a moving permit, because...
For their own, for, for the trailer that they're selling, but if they're just moving one for somebody?
No, they have to have proof of taxes paid on that, on that mobile home when they are moving it. There's, there's some laws and attachments on there that we were under the understanding that had to do with DOE, like the Notice of Dealer Transport, that since that's been, they don't even use that anymore. They got rid of that in 2005 at one of the conventions.
So, so, and if the dealer doesn't do it, then am I reading this right, that he can be, he can be, a penalty can, a $250 penalty can be placed against him?
Absolutely, on the dealer, the owner of the home, the lien holder, yes. And we've done that before.
Okay, we just had a couple here, two weeks ago, I think it was, or maybe it was just one. No, there was a couple of them. They did, who, who then notifies, who, who then notifies? How do we get this process going to jerk the dealers around a little bit if they're not getting this stuff done?
Well, we talked to the dealer inspector in West River in our area, and Mr. Pena, on the ones that we have fined before, we turn it over to him, and he, in turn, turns it over to the state of South Dakota, and the state of South Dakota is the one that puts out the fines. And we don't get any money for that. We basically do all the paperwork and...
But, but if we, if we fine these people for doing it, then we'll stop them from doing it. I mean, once they have to pay a fine, and they're getting paid whatever they get paid to drag the motor home to, the mobile home to another county, if they, if they have to give, pay a couple hundred bucks or $500, they'll stop doing it, and they'll start doing it right, the right way.
Right, and their position on this one is, they did have, the taxes were paid on the abatements that he did. Correct, Shannon? The taxes were paid, and they didn't have to obtain a permit. No one was notified, because they don't have to notify Pennington County, they're pulling it off, they just have to notify the county where it's going to.
And they likely did that.
That's the problem, as, as I'm seeing it. We need to do something in the law that says they have to notify the county that it's being taken from, and also notify the county that it's being moved to. That's the only way that we're gonna stop it and fix it, because if they just notify the county that it's going to, they're not gonna call Pennington and say, hey, we have your mobile home.
How do they know to, really?
They don't. They don't know where it came from.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to, I mean, as far as us putting in a law now, it would be too late for the Treasurers, because our convention is over, it has to be approved through that process. However, the Commissioners possibly could, could do it, and it seems like we're the, our county is unique because we have the most mobile homes, and we push them more than any other county in the state does.
So which one of these statutes, then, would we add the verbiage to?
Um, that's by dealer. Should make a notation on the listing. I would say 10-9-3.3, where it says if current taxes have been paid, shall make a notation on such listing form under the signature, giving the county in which the taxes were paid in it. No, that's not. I, you know, Commissioner, I'd wanna go back and, do you wanna put it under that one?
10-9-3.1 says the dealer shall complete the mobile home manufactured listing form and send the completed form to Director of Equalization in the county in which the mobile home was delivered.
Yeah, okay, so that's 10-9-3.1 is where we wanna change it.
And so then you'd wanna have them also provide a copy to...
The county in which it was removed from.
The Director of Equalization in that county?
Yes.
Is that what you'd want?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the need for endorsement by the County Treasurer's Association or the County Commission Association is not a barrier. Independent, individual legislators can carry a bill for anyone.
That's, that's correct.
And, and I would recommend that we somehow, formally or otherwise, initiate the process to get that amendment in the hands of a competent legislator who will carry it forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I got notice that the Black Hills Association's having a meeting in Rapid City in December sometime, and are inviting the legislators, so it would be a perfect time for our Treasurer to have a little program and enlist one of the, the legislators in this exact thing. And you could find one right then.
I think that would be a good idea.
And if you don't know the...
Be December or October?
October.
Is it October?
Yeah, the legislators are being invited.
October. Then, then you'd have to get that program done a little faster.
It's out.
Can you do, can you put this together, you think, Janet?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get right on it.
Well, I just, I just think...
You'll handle it, huh?
I just think that it would be...
Between my moving and everything, yeah. No. It shouldn't be that hard to just...
Add the verbiage.
Add the verbiage.
Add the verbiage, and if you contact a legislator, they'll send it in to LRC to get it drafted.
Okay, yeah, there was just one here. I just got his email, and I've gotta email him about something else, so I'll, I'll see if I can...
I just think it'd be good.
You can work at night, too, you know?
I know.
And earlier than six or five in the morning.
You're really looking at trouble, aren't you?
But that's, but that's all we wanna do, is just add that verbiage to it. And the commission...
That would, that would help alleviate some of these issues that we have to deal with.
Yeah.
And the liaison for the, you're on the, that board, correct?
Yeah, for the Black Hills?
Yeah.
Not any longer.
Who is our Commissioner on, do we have a Commissioner on that board?
Everybody, we all are, basically.
Okay, but the Commissioners, the Commissioners will be at that meeting to back me on the change of this, correct?
Yep, we will.
Think we have a, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I, when you're done talking about this, I just have some, I just have procedural questions, because I noticed that we have so many offices that are dealing with this, and I'm wondering if there is in a way that you could, you could kind of move the main process to just one office and then notify the other two offices? Because we're sending P and Z to Treasurer, Director of Equalization. I really kind of feel sorry for a person coming in trying to get one, and they might think, well, I've tried to do this before, and this is just not worth it, I'm gonna move and see if I get caught. I mean, you know, sometimes you create a barrier because we make it so difficult, and I just was asking, as do we move, if there might be a way that we could more centralize it and then, you know, pick one location, one office, to really do most of everything, and then notify the other two.
I, I don't think anybody's here from planning, but planning has to know that it's going on, because they have to have the proper permits in order to put a mobile home on the property in Pennington County that they're moving to. That's why they have to go to planning.
And I get that, but I just, it just seems like we're...
I don't have a problem with it, Nancy, but I have a problem on trying to do planning and zoning's job that I know nothing about.
And I'm fine... And I'm fine with that, I'm just saying I think it's worth your, worth a talk among the three offices to see what kinda minimization of, I mean, that's the typical, oh, the government is so difficult to deal with kinda thing, and I, when I see something like this, I, I just think it's worth the question of, is there a, a little less of hassle we can, we can give our folks? So, after you move.
When we move into the new building, it'll all be on the same floor.
Yeah, that is true. That'll be helpful.
But yes, we can, we can sit down.
Go here, they can go over here, anywhere.
Footprints on them.
Shannon and whoever the head, new head of planning and zoning is.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next item is item 13, an abatement application, David and Tammy Eggermeyer.
This is continued from last week, you have an abatement request from the property owner, but at the last commission meeting, the commission asked me to get some numbers, and I have those for you. The property owner has a copy of this already.
Okay, Shannon, what you provided us here is what the difference would be in value? Is, is that what you're telling us?
That's right.
Okay, and, and you're, you're not recommending that we approve this abatement?
No, the property owner's bringing the abatement request to you. Yes.
And, and the reason you're not supporting this is statutorily, or what?
I don't think it's a, an issue that is abatable per statute, and as we discussed at length at the last meeting, the opinions that we've got from circuit court cases and attorney generals' opinions, that it doesn't fall under the abatable reasons.
What you're saying is that it should've been brought to the commissioners during the equalization hearings?
That's correct.
So if, if that's the criteria, bring it during equalization hearings. As you look at the equity and, and fairness of this issue, if they, they came to the equalization hearings next spring, would you just say all that history doesn't matter?
The property was in fact appealed to the, to the Board of Equalization this year, and I believe it was the local board, not the county board, but a Board of Equalization changed the value this year. The, the issue here, the abatement, is from 2013 and, and back, it has already been brought to the Board of Equalization.
So what really is happening is that the homeowner wants a refund, thinking they're gonna get a refund kind of deal. And we can't do that.
For, for the previous years, 2008 through 2012, it'll be a refund, for 2013, taxes paid in '14, depending on how much of the taxes have been paid this year, it could be a refund, because the tax bill is still maybe due this year, but for the previous year, certainly.
Isn't there a, a limit on how far back we can abate things? Wouldn't there be two or three year...
Five years. A, uh, the, the law isn't so clear, but it does mention five years. That's sort of a non-issue here, because in 2008, there wasn't a, a structure on the assessment, so it, it really wouldn't matter.
So I can come in with my, my situation and apply for this after, if we approve hers? I mean, I, the reality is, I, I, I take responsibility for the fact that I didn't read mine very clearly. I didn't look at the square footage as I should have, and I believe that a homeowner has a responsibility to watch that. We can't, we have so many homeowners, so many property owners, I, I mean, I, I just don't see how we could make that exception, and I'm not sure we can legally.
Any other comments? Ma'am, do you wish to address the commission?
Well...
State your name, please.
My name is Tammy Eggermeyer, and we visited this at length at the last meeting, and, and I think we agreed that there were distinct errors made, even though by the letter of the law, they're not considered errors. As written, that's the way it's understood in common language, however, and we were told by the state's attorney that that's not how it's to be interpreted. I just feel like this year I am paying more property tax, and I know it's based on last year's assessment, but I'm sitting in a home that is overvalued by over $41,000, and I'm paying those property taxes this year, and that's what I was asking for the abatement on. I hope it can be taken into consideration, whether or not law stipulates, otherwise you do have the authority to right a wrong, so, thank you.
Any questions for Tammy? So with the corrected assessment, what's, what is the tax differential?
I asked him, and he said he would have the equation.
The tax difference? I, I don't know. The auditor calculates the tax difference after the abatement, the abatement is always a, an abatement of value.
What's the mill rate?
I don't know.
Could you estimate?
I, I don't know what the levy is on the property.
She may have road district, she may have, who knows what's with it?
Really? No way of a...
I asked Shannon this yesterday in an email, he said he didn't have it at that moment.
I, what, what are typical levies? Fifteen to $20 per thousand? We've got $40,000 here, I, I don't know what the levy is.
Well, it's, if, if it's 20, $20 per thousand, you're, it's pretty easy, we're looking at about $800 difference, is that correct?
Yeah, that'd be a guess, yeah.
So, at what point was this discrepancy brought forward?
It was...
In relation to your assessment process?
The property was appealed through the local Board of Equalization for 2014, this year.
In March of this year.
And what did they do?
The Board of Equalization reduced the value for 2014.
And they reduced it to $34,900?
I think that's correct, yeah.
So then it's really a couple thousand in value we're talking about?
So we're even, you're even showing that it should've went down more than that? Is that what you're saying?
The, the numbers that I've provided were for 2013 and back for these specific issues. I couldn't replicate the change in that, that $35,000 this year, because I don't have the data that was changed at local Board of Equalization, all of that has been changed. The local board changed it for, for whatever reason was discussed there, local or county, I, I'm not sure which, but I provided numbers for the years previous.
So you actually did have a decrease for last year, did you realize that, right?
2014, this year.
Which won't be received until 2015, correct?
So you're not technically sitting in a house that's worth so much more right now?
No, but I'm paying more than its value to...
Karen wants to say something.
Yep. I looked up the levy for 2013, it was 17.96.
Okay, thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Mark Vargo, county state's attorney. What Jay, in his research found, though, is that the abatement is not the proper mechanism here, and if we make this abatement, we essentially leave the treasurer liable for under collection of taxes, which would put us in the interesting position of the treasurer, potentially through the state's attorney, having to appeal the decision of the board represented by the state's attorney, and hiring outside counsel so that we can get all of that done. And I understand the frustration certainly of the homeowner, but the direct appeal is the mechanism that is contemplated by statute in order for this to happen. If we were to read the abatement statute the way the homeowner is suggesting, we essentially wouldn't need the direct appeal process. And we obviously have it for a reason, so that's why he believes that the statute, though you can read the word error, as Commissioner Holloway has, the opinions of the attorney general, and kind of a rational reading of the whole statute, or of the statute as a whole, leaves him with the impression that we, that the board does not have this authority, and that's the concern that he would have.
If I remember correctly, at the last, who was it, the gentleman in the suit who stood up, was he a state's attorney? And he said that he didn't find that anybody would appeal it.
What?
He said there would, if you look back at the video of this meeting, I recall that he said it could be appealed, but that who's going to fight themselves, basically?
I think you got a treasurer with a different interpretation of that.
And I think the auditor did, too.
The appeal would come from me, because I have to collect the taxes, because I'm personally liable, that means I have to pay it out of my bank account, and that's why I told the commissioners, if they approve it, um...
It's not gonna get paid?
It's not gonna, it's not gonna get paid, cause I'm not gonna pay it, so which in turn, Jay and Mark said, I would have to sue the commissioners, and they couldn't represent the commissioners and me, so they would have to go out and buy, and hire legal counsel to represent the commissioners and to represent me, because by law, they have to represent both of us.
Well, the good part of that is, he'll win a case, the bad part is, he'll also lose that case.
Yeah. One of us is gonna win and one of us is gonna lose.
These are the kind, Mr. Chairman, these are kinda things that are really tough, cause we all know what the right, the right answer is. Unfortunately, I don't think we can do that.
I guess I have to think that, that if any one of us, regardless of our job title, were in the same circumstance, we would be standing here, seeking some kinda relief and/or adjustment, and since it's not us, me, not Commissioner Davis individually, I really don't think that excuses us from trying to seek some reasonable solution to this thing, that, that is fair. And I, I certainly don't have any suggestions that probably would meet the legal, legal structure, but it strikes me that even though you might not be making a refund or anything like that, that you could lower the assessment for a few years, still be in range that you, the accuracy range that exists in the county, and modify this whole thing over a period of time. And...
So, so, Mr. Chair, how much further do we lower it? Because what we're doing then, if I read this right, right now, it's 276,400 for the 2014 tax, according to this. So, so we've lowered it, and we, what we're going to do, if we lower it even further to, to do this for her, is we are going to mess up the whole equalization, I, I mean, of that area, as far as taxes? Because equalization means that we look at the overall in an area, and we try to make it see, make all of those properties within this area equally taxed as best we can. And when we have someone whom we give special treatment to and drop it down, then does that mean that your neighbor and on either side of you and across the street now gets that same kind of consideration, because we should drop them to make them equal with you? And then we have a state auditor who isn't going to like that.
But, because assumptions were made based on my neighbors, it would, I received...
Okay, I, I understand, I'm in the same situation, I explained that to you, and I did not come, because I knew I, as a homeowner, had a responsibility to read it, and I didn't read it very clearly.
Commissioner Holloway.
But is that fair to my neighbors or to me, to raise it above and beyond based on the average?
But that isn't what happened. You were paying according to what was going on in your neighborhood already, and now it's been dropped down, and then it's being suggested it be dropped further to compensate you, and we, we can't do that. I, I, I can't do that. That's not right.
Commissioner Holloway.
Mark, you had, you had said that this wasn't the proper procedure to right this wrong, do you have a suggestion on what procedure, if any, that would be legal for the county to undertake?
I'm afraid I don't. I was just sitting back there thinking about that, because the, the chairman's suggestion is at least interesting. There's been an artificial uptick, so to speak, in the value in the neighborhood, and then we would legislate an artificial downtick to compensate for it. That's new enough to me, that I haven't seen it before, I don't know that there, and, I don't know whether that is legal or not. And so I, that one, at least off the top of my head, I can't find a reason why you couldn't do that, now you might choose not to do it, and that remains within your discretion. The problem is that the mechanism where we're here, we can say, doesn't fit.
Yeah.
And that's where...
Let me ask you this, what if this lady drafted a, a bill to the county for overcollected taxes for four years, and asked to be reimbursed for it? Now, I don't know if the county can just, got a check to a citizen because they overcollected taxes or not.
I just asked Ron that.
I think your treasurer just responded as I would've expected her to. I don't think that's possible, and again, the reason is that the appeal process essentially operates as a statute of limitations. If you don't avail yourself of the appeal, you run out of time to deal with the wrong done, and that's where we are now. Criminal law, we have kind of an opt-out, where you say if a person is factually innocent, even if their conviction was 20 years ago, they can come back in and get it reversed.
But in civil, there is.
But for civil, there isn't, and for criminal... But for civil, there isn't, and for criminal, there are still timeframes regardless, other than actual innocence. What we have here essentially is an actual innocence claim and no real mechanism to get to it. Other than perhaps the one that the chair suggested.
But that doesn't seem.
That one's got its own logistical wrinkles, but I don't know that it's illegal, let's put it that way.
I think I recall conversations in which things like the word median was used, and some properties in our current system are above and some are below. I think Commissioner Busch, I've heard you reference that.
Gotta be, didn't it?
And so if that, if that's the case, it's already a characteristic of the system. And so the whole thing must be illegal if somebody's at ninety-one percent and someone else is at a hundred and three percent.
My understanding is we're not supposed to go above a hundred percent on anything. But Mr. Schut for an accurate valuation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Wouldn't we be opening, I mean, if in fact we come up with some innovative way of refunding this lady some of her money for taxes, wouldn't we be really opening up the door? So that any, any taxpayer that maybe had their property valued at a hundred and three percent could come in and say, I want that too, and I want to go back five years to get this corrected? And, and so, I mean, we could, we could have this place filled up with taxpayers wanting a refund on their taxes.
If, if the refund was based on an error, in the, the, setting the value was in the hands of the government.
But, but if, if, if the, if the equalization office assesses property over a hundred percent, they've made an error.
If they assess it without factors like this, that's an error too.
Right. I mean, when the state's attorney explains the statute of limitations, and that's the appeal process where it shuts the door, I mean, I'd like to see this lady be righted, because I really do think we were wrong for those years. I'm just not sure that there's a mechanism for us to do it. And the mechanism, the mechanism to correct this kind of stuff is that appeal process.
Essentially, our statutory scheme places a burden on the landowner. The landowner has to watch their valuation and challenge it during the appeal process. And the abatement comes in with some very specific reasons to go outside of that, which we don't think apply here. And I think the treasurer and the auditor obviously don't think it apply here. And the mechanism also, again, as if you did vote to abate the property, the treasurer and auditor are left holding the bag with no mechanism for them to pay the money that you've essentially ordered to be paid. And would be liable for under collection of taxes. And that's where they get into a, an administrative and legal can of worms themselves.
But again, this isn't just a small margin there, it's a gross margin.
I don't argue that.
Can't argue with you with that, ma'am.
And I think what you're saying is that we need to get a hold of, get the legislature to try to do something about their enactment of a law that doesn't allow the commissioners to take care of a problem like this.
Except that.
So how that can happen, I don't know, but.
Can't, can't accept that if you, if we open it up so that there's never a, the gate never gets closed on an issue, then, boy, your liability is hanging out there for years and years and years.
Sure, I agree.
And that, that's why there is statutes of limitation on different things. So that you can close that barn door once in a while.
But as I remember, the limitation on this is at one year to the next. It's not seven years, like whatever crime may be, it's not a criminal offense, it's a civil offense.
Well.
As I see it, anyway.
If you get injured, you got.
And I was gonna ask Shannon, if we do lower her taxes, then the rest of the taxpayers in Pennington County is going to have a tick up in their assessment. It's very small for the whole, but the whole outfit's gonna, the whole Pennington County taxpayers throughout the whole county are going to have an equalization raise to accommodate for this. And so the schools are gonna demand their side of the money, and so we're gonna pay that regardless. Am I saying it about right?
May I ask another question?
Yes, you may.
Okay, under the SCL ten eighteen, it says if an error has been made, and we determine that this doesn't fall under that kind of error, but assuming this was that kind of error, and you had to refund because of the law, where would that money come from?
I don't know, I guess.
When an abatement is, is done, the, what that does is it reduces the taxable value, which reduces the taxes paid. If the taxes have been paid, that abatement creates a refund due, which takes back from whence the taxes were delivered to, which is all the taxing entities, if it's a legal abatement. So it comes back from them in the monthly cycles.
Commissioner Troutman, how did you discover your problem?
I refinanced my house, and the appra, they have an appraiser come out, and he measured. And he said, you know, you don't have as much square footage here as, it was two hundred and some. And I said, what do you mean? And he said, no, you don't have as much square footage. So then I had the assessor's office come out, and yes, that was true. And it had been all this time, and I've lived in the house eleven years, this was a year ago, so ten years' worth of being charged for a higher amount, because I thought I had more square footage than I did. I never measured it, but I probably should have been responsible. And I never would have thought to do this, it's adjusted for this current year, that's how I think that should be. I felt I was the homeowner, and I was the one who was not reading it, hadn't verified it.
How did you discover your discrepancy?
I live in a new neighborhood, and houses around me fairly similar started going on the market for sale. And so we started looking at what they were selling for. You want to know that you've made a good investment. And I realized at that point that there's no way, my house, the house across the street was selling for the amount that I was being assessed at, but they had a lot more of the features that I was erroneously being assessed for. And so that's when I realized the error. And that's what it states in the.
But how did you find out the specifics of the error?
I called and asked that, I actually came in and asked what my assessment was based on at that point. And, and basically, that's what it says is in the, let's see, in my notes here. It says, I had done my homework, it says, in other words, there were, there are requirements and rules set forth by the County Board of Equalization under Property Owners Rights and Duties, which instructs a homeowner, and it states in there, to ask yourself if your prop, if you sold your property, is this the amount you could expect to receive? You know, houses weren't, we were all in a new home, they weren't selling until that point. So until then, we had no realization that, I don't look at my owner, I don't go online, I know you can, under GIS, and see what your home, you know, your neighbors' homes are assessed at. I had never done that until this point, I had no idea.
When you get your tax notices, if, if you saw a bold print statement on there that said, be sure to check the accuracy of your, the features of your home or your property relative to equalization, what would you have done?
I honestly, I honestly assumed that an honest adjustment, our assessment, had been made. When we purchased our home, the first year, of course, the taxes were lower, because the builder had owned it for part of the year, and we owned it for part of the year. And our, our realtor told us at that point, now this is just for this point, it will be increasing next year. And so I expected an increase, I didn't realize what it was based on.
Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Chair, as bad as I hate to, I'm gonna have to make a motion to deny this abatement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to deny the abatement. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, item fourteen.
That is my item, right? Okay. Denny Gordon, county fire administrator. Hopefully, this is a little more straightforward and simple than the previous one there.
Mr. Chair?
We can always try.
I don't have time to listen to Denny this morning, if that's all right by him. I make motion to approve the Mitchell Lake Agreement and Fire Emergency Services with the United States Air Force, Altered Air Force Base.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Just wanted to make sure you had a chance.
I had a twenty-minute speech ready to go, but.
That's what I was afraid of, I know, you give you a mic, you can't get rid of you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and some comments. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Tom, you take a hint from Denny.
I'll let you do whatever you want.
Item fifteen A.
Fifteen A. The public hearing on the resolution to revise the Pennington County Highway System. This resolution is a bookkeeping item, so that we can get the state and the county to agree on what our roads are. Several roads are what were taken by the city of Rapid City, one by the city of Wool. Then we had three of them that were misclassified. We have them as secondary instead of primary. Then there are ten roads that they had as secondary roads, and we have them as primary. This resolution is to be, we have a motion to approve the resolution, so that we can turn it over to the Secretary of Transportation, and they can make the correct adjustments. Does that readers digest enough?
Yep.
And what does this do? I mean, what, how do they use this?
This makes no difference to us, because we already, we're telling them how our roads are classified. The primary roads.
Is there any dollars attached to the way it's, whether it's secondary or primary?
Not really, no. It's just a bookkeeping item.
As you may recall, Heine went through an extensive procedure, and then found out the state was using a nineteen thirty-nine map.
Yep.
And so we had to re, renegotiate the whole thing. And I'm assuming this is kind of an annual update, or?
No, we're hoping we're done. This, a lot of these are little pieces at the ends of ones that Heine changed, or ones that have been annexed within the cities.
Mr. Chair, make motion to approve Resolution twenty fourteen dash zero nine dash nineteen, the resolution to revise the Pennington County Highway System, and authorize chairperson's signature thereupon for submission to the Secretary of Transportation and South Dakota Department of Transportation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And you said that all in one breath.
Impressed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. And we have an item B, which is another resolution.
Another resolution. This is for approval, saying that the commission agrees with us to apply for a TAP grant, a Transportation Alternatives Program grant. And basically, it's saying you agree with it, and you'll agree to let us pay for it. We have a matching fund of eighteen point oh five percent that we have to pay for this grant. This is to upgrade sidewalk ramps at corners of, within the, most of them are out in the Rapid Valley area.
This, this kind of falls in line with some of the ADA things.
This is the ADA things that we have been audited on. This says there's two hundred and fifty, since then, we have found we have three hundred and seven of them. And I'm sure we'll find more.
Mr. Chair, but do you, what happens if we don't get the grant? Then we'll just do them a little at a time?
We'll have to foot it ourselves. Because we, the ADA, the way I understood it with the ADA audit, we have three years to comply.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
This will be in our two thousand sixteen budget, it'll take us that long to get the grant, get the plans together, and get her going. Wish me to read it, or?
No, no, I just had that question.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the Resolution twenty fourteen oh nine dash nineteen B, a resolution for twenty fifteen TAP grant application and cost commitment, and authorize the chairperson's signature thereupon for submission with the grant application.
Okay, do we have a second?
Why not?
You can do it in one breath.
We have a motion and a why not?
Twelve thousand comedians out of work, and he keeps trying to crack jokes.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion. Okay, next item is the air quality board liaison situation.
Yes, we advertised, we did not receive any applications. A second notice was sent out, and we did receive the one that is in front of you. Out of total fairness, I want to let you know that I did not call Mr. White to be in attendance today. Therefore, I don't believe there's any time crunches. If you want me to have him here, so you can meet him at the next meeting, otherwise, you're free to make a motion to appoint, completely up to you guys.
Yes. I would certainly like to visit with him, and I guess I do have a concern. Because it feels to me in the application that he is applying on behalf of the Rapid City Fire Department, he really is supposed to be representing the county. And I would like to hear his philosophy of what he's representing and what he thinks he'll be doing personally.
I, I sat on that board, if you could call it that. We don't meet very often, and over the time that I've been attending, we haven't done anything.
Yeah.
So it's, it's probably not the hottest button in, in the deal.
We might want to inform him of that. Get appointed to a board that doesn't do any of that.
And I guess one of the things that I do remember is that we had, a few years ago, they, they brought the changes to the air quality and changed what the county was doing. Everything was done according to what the city wanted the county to do, and we were expected to accept that. And some of it did not work for the way that we operate the county. And we should have been involved in it. And so I'm a little sensitive, I guess, in that I believe that if you're gonna represent the county, you better be representing the county, and not the fire department.
I will absolutely call Mr. White if you want to make a motion to continue till October seventh. I will see if he's available to attend, and we can discuss.
So moved.
How would Holly like to be the liaison to the, for the county to the air quality board?
We need a second to the motion.
You would like me to do it?
Sure. Sure.
You have that authority.
During work time, he said that one o'clock in the afternoon's a meeting.
I'll second.
We have a second to the motion, and we have another thought thrown into the pot, so any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. One... No, well, right.
So did you second the motion for Holly, or did you second for this White to come?
Postponer for a week.
That's what I thought, so that's why I voted no.
Okay, I think our next item is...
It's right behind you.
And this is a lien release request.
Hello, sir, this is Holly from the Commission Office. Are you ready? Do you have any questions before we start? I'm just gonna put you on speakerphone and just ask the commission what you... Tell the commission what you want them to hear about this lien release request. And why the request to you. Okay, just a moment here, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone.
Okay, sir, you've joined the meeting.
Oh, good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning. Um, I was kinda hard to... Um, ask for a request, but I put in a request to see if it'd be a chance for me to be excluded from that. They're against me, my income ain't too high. I don't know if I can afford to pay that, I know I've done wrong in the past here, but I appreciate it if you consider a request to exclude me from the payment.
Any of the commissioners have any questions?
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Troutman. I am looking at your financial report that you have submitted to us, and I understand that you do not have a job. However, you show a hundred-dollar expense related to work schedules for childcare. What does... I guess I'm not quite understanding. If you don't...
My daughter... My daughter, she goes to school, so I have to use gas money to get her to school.
You have to use... I'm sorry, what?
I have to get her to school, once someone to drive her to school. My car's down right now, no... I used to drive her, but she's boarding school. No, she's in boarding school right now.
So you spend a hundred dollars a month taking her back and forth to boarding school?
For a month, yeah, it's for gas.
Okay, and so then you... But that's really not related to work schedules, is it?
Oh, no. No. I'm sorry, I messed up there.
Any other questions by the commission?
This is Commissioner Holloway. The reason you're requesting this is... Is there something going on, or you were just contacted by the collection agency that you owed the money?
Yeah, I was contacted by... I don't know what firm it was in Rapid, this past summer, I think. And I owed this... I didn't realize that I owed that much. But I come look at the records, and I think it was in the past during the eighties, I got in trouble. And they requested me to get in touch with their county commission. I called them and got an application. Questioned her.
I'll make a motion to deny the request for lien release.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the request. Any further discussion? Sir, do you wish to comment any further?
Yeah, I... You know, I was... Would sure see if you guys would consider it, because, you know, right now, I was on disability, but they switched me to Social Security when I retired. So, you know, I'm a diabetic, and I've got a bad heart and everything, bad back, so I can't do much, you know. But just that Social Security check I get every month, it carried me a very far. I sure appreciate if you'd consider, because, you know, I'm over the hill now and all wounded, so, you know. I sure appreciate if you could consider.
Mr. Tubols, this is Commissioner Troutman again. Because you have a minor child, and you're on the income that you receive, do you receive any money for her?
Yeah, she gets that for her.
She what?
Yeah, she gets it.
Okay. So you don't really show that income here.
Well, that was switched over from... I know that last year or year before, when they switched me from disability to Social Security.
Okay, but she... You said she got her part of that benefit as well. Am I correct?
Yeah.
And you don't...
She gets that, um...
You don't show any income that indicates that.
I don't know, I couldn't find that paper. Internet... She got it, she gets it, but...
You mind telling me how much that is?
I think it's three... Three forty-five or three fifty-four, I wondered.
Any other comments? We do have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item. Let's see, we're ahead of schedule. How'd we do that?
About a ten-minute break.
You... We have a motion for a ten-minute recess, a second. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So moved.
Motion to go into a board of adjustment. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are in a board of adjustment.
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, PJ Conover, interim planning director. Item before you is variance fourteen twenty-three to reduce the minimum required lot size from forty acres to four point eight nine five acres in a general agricultural district. The applicant and the owners are Dallas and Mary Dietrich, and they are in the room today. Surveyor is Hanson Surveying, and surrounding zoning is all general agriculture. Just a little background, CUP O two fifty-nine was approved by the Planning Commission on December ninth, two thousand and two, for the subject property to have an organized group camp. It was last continued by the Planning Commission on December eighth, two thousand and three, and since that time, the... Our office has not received any complaints about this organized group camp. I'm gonna approach the screen real quick.
What the applicant is asking is... They own these five mining claims, and the two subject claims, the Longmont and the Otto's number two. What they're looking to do is basically take this chunk of land where most of the buildings are and create a parcel out of it. They have about a hundred and twenty acres that they could use for that purpose.
But what they're looking to do right now is just to use those top two items. It is... It does have access off of Greyhound Gulch Road, which is a numbered forest road, and a private access easement. And all five mining claim properties are legal nonconforming as they've been existing prior to ninety-four. On July fourteenth of this year, the Planning Commission approved layout plat fourteen fifteen for the subject property that you see there on the screen. There are similar properties of equal or smaller or slightly larger size within one-mile radius of this property, and they average around three point eight acres. This report was put through the interdepartmental review, and no significant issues came up. There are no specific physical conditions that exist which would warrant approval of this lot size variance. Strict application would require a lot size of forty acres to meet the general agriculture district minimum lot size. The applicant could pull extra land from the existing mining claims to meet that forty acres. That is a possibility. They also have the possibility of rezoning to low-density residential, which is a three-acre minimum. However, if he was to do that, he would lose the CUP for the group camp. Granting the proposed variance is not in harmony with the general purpose of the intent of our zoning ordinance, and if variance fourteen twenty-three is approved by the Board of Adjustment, staff does not recommend any conditions of approval.
Any questions by the commission?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve variance VA fourteen twenty-three as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Holloway?
Thank you. The little triangle right up to the head up that looks like it's got a house or some building in it?
Not owned by the applicant.
It's not owned by the applicant?
That is correct.
And how is that... Is that a parcel?
We're talking about this one?
Yeah. And what's the acreage on that? Did we make a... An exception for that? And is it...
That specific one, I probably included in my map, but I can pull up Rapid map real quick and see.
And... Well, I'm just wondering if it's consistent, or, you know, it looks smaller than the one that we're looking... We're talking about here today, but I'm wondering if at some point in time, we had made an exception for that?
There was one that I found within a mile in two thousand and eight that was approved for point six acres in general ag. I'm not sure if that... I don't believe that would be the property. All the other ones were legal nonconforming.
Would Mr. Dietrich be able to answer that?
Do you know who owns that? And whether... Was that a... Was that done through a...
His name is Mark Schultz.
Okay. Yeah.
They were hard... It was hard to find. Found one.
So that was never part of your...
Any other questions? Comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Should we continue as a board of adjustments, or...
No, I think we better come out, and that's a motion.
Move by Commissioner Davis. Second by Commissioner Troutman to adjourn as a board of adjustments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The planning and zoning consent agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed by the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for the planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B, second reading of Rezone fourteen oh six, Mick Morris applicant and Davis Engineering agent, and approval is recommended. Item C, second reading of Rezone fourteen oh seven for Pacific Alone Pool LLC, Davis Engineering as the agent, and approval is recommended. Item D, second reading of Rezone fourteen oh five and Comprehensive Plan Amendment fourteen oh five for Josiah Frink and Pamela Frink, and approval is recommended.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item E.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor. I'm presenting item E. It's vacation of a section line VS fourteen dash zero two for Michael and Barbara Lewis. Fisk Land Surveying is the agent. The intent of the vacation is to vacate a thirty-three-foot-wide undeveloped portion of section line right-of-way along the north property lines of lots. Thirty-eight R and thirty... Or thirty-eight R and thirty-nine R in section thirty-one of Ponderosa Ridge Estates. Late in the year, they reconfigured lot lines, and as a condition of their plat, they were required to post bond to either remove the structures that were encroaching in the section line right-of-way or vacate this right-of-way. As part of the requirement, they did receive all of the signatures. I did do... Our staff did a site visit, I guess, and the topography is such that it'd be difficult to vacate that or improve that section line. Over on the ridge, there's a... The topography goes up, and then there's a drainage or a creek that runs on that other side. So for the adjoining property owner to actually utilize that probably wouldn't be happening, so... And there's the structures, there's the brick building you can see, and then go back one. And then there's the garage.
Who owns the property to the...
North. Hills Materials. And currently, they aren't utilizing that. They don't have a mining permit on that lot yet.
And I assume they were notified of this?
Yes. I believe that this was advertised. Yes.
Just advertised, but they weren't specifically notified that we're looking at it?
No, and the agent is here. Did you talk to... Sorry.
Don't you have to get six hundred signatures or something like that?
They needed three hundred and forty-five, or three seventy-five, actually, and they did receive that. The auditor's office did certify the signatures.
Was this sign... Is the signature requirement of the people in that general area, or what?
Throughout the whole county?
No, it's the one percent of the votes in the last gubernatorial election.
When you talk about legislative activity, that's another procedure that needs to be changed.
Pardon?
Is that how you spent your nights?
No, no, thankfully, I didn't have to do that one, so that's kind of painful. Janelle, I'll think with Fisk Land Surveying. I'm here with the Lewis's. And actually, Hills Materials signed the application. Since they were an adjoining landowner, they actually signed the petition. So it was the Lewis's, their neighbors, the Bingamans, and then Northwest Engineering, the property that abuts to the north. So there's a copy of the application that they signed, so they consented. And Pat Telestas was the signer on behalf of Northwest Engineering.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Now I'll make a motion to approve vacation of section line VS fourteen dash oh two.
Second.
Motion and a second.
As a point of clarification, can we say that this is vacation of section line right-of-way? You're not vacating the section line itself, just the right-of-way. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Next items from the chair. I would report to you that, I think it was last Friday, a week ago... I would report to you that, I think it was last Friday, a week ago. I joined Ben Snow and Mayor Quaker and three gentlemen from Colorado to look at a potential mine, sand mine, on Ditch Creek. And things are moving forward on that. Those folks have 1,700 acres of mining claims filed and under their control. The mining would be tunnel mining, not open pit. And the projection, they probably have another year or two of state and federal procedures to go through. But, and if they get into operation, they're looking at having over 200 trucks on the road. But fortunately, they'd all be going out to the west to Newcastle. And at some point in time, when they're ready, they would seek an audience with this commission to report. Very interesting project. That's all I have. Next item is committee reports and the convention recap. So what do we have? Three people there?
Mm-hmm.
Three commissioners, Holly and who else?
Honors, treasurers, registered deeds, highways.
Temporarily, the chief deputy sheriff.
Representative.
Do you want to individually comment on this, or do you want to schedule all those people in to report next time?
I can say mine quickly. I'm sure damn glad I got home early when I did.
Okay. But who wants to be first?
Well, I will, because Nancy probably will be talking for all of us.
Talk too much, huh?
It was a decent convention. The major, you know, they have a ton of programs that you can choose to go to if you want. But the most important thing I thought was at the business meeting, and most of the resolutions, I think, that we proposed through the Black Hills Association passed, including the ag one that I'm sure Nancy will want to probably expound on more than I do. Fireworks one went through. Let's see, what else did we have there?
Well, you might want to talk about the TIF that Soufaz brought in, because that fits.
Yeah, they.
They're going, oh, that takes money away from us.
Yeah. There was a lot of talk about taxes and Minnehaha County wanting to increase from 3% to 4%, whichever's greater. And that didn't, they never fly with that, because, you know, most of the counties frankly aren't that hearted up for money. Minnehaha just happens to be in tough shape right now. There was a lot of talk about alcohol tax, which, great, we're going to, at the Board of Directors, there was a bunch of argument about how much money it would save and how much money it would bring into each county. Finally, they knew they weren't getting anywhere, so it's going to be up to the Board of Directors in a month or two, whenever we have our next meeting, to come up with something. Probably a straight 10% across the board tax, sales tax on alcohol. Well, the minute you throw sales tax, we're not going to get it. The municipalities will fight us, the state will fight us. We've got to talk, call it something other than sales tax. Excise tax, you know, something, but sales tax isn't going to work. But that's probably what'll happen, and I wouldn't expect it to go too far. But let's see, what was the TIF one?
Oh, they want the entity that issues the TIF to, that the tax would only, like, if a city issues a TIF, only their tax portion goes to pay the TIF back, that they won't use the school and the county money or road districts' money or anything like that.
And they want, you know, they want a position on the TIF boards, which we now have, which doesn't mean, you know, doesn't mean a whole lot. But I never said anything, but, you know, I don't know where they were last year or the year before, when we tried the same thing, and I was the only one up there testifying. In fact, is the legislator sponsor backed out? So it was, you knew you weren't going too far in that one, but it was basically the same argument, and municipalities just, and the legislators, nope. It's the only way that South Dakota has to attract business, and it's great for economic development, and so we're going to keep it in there. Counties, we don't really care how much you spend. And they were whining that, well, it cost them, what, 300, $600,000. I wish that's what it was costing us. You did bring up the $2.5 million that we don't get.
Yeah.
But, so I don't hold out much faith in that one going anywhere either. So, I don't know. You got?
Well, Mead County resolution, you know, we did vote to support them as far as getting that highway designated. The New Underwood Road, we'll refer to it as a state highway. They did some changing on their resolution, and it made sense and actually made it palatable for everyone. And what they're really saying is they're saying the SDACC would support Mead County in its efforts to have the New Underwood Road designated state highway. And what that did is took the onus off of SDACC in getting that accomplished. The way the resolution was written before, SDACC was responsible for getting it done. That was a very smart move, and I think it's an appropriate move, and it passed easily. So I would imagine beings we have part of that road in Pennington County will be involved in that to some degree. The, on Monday of the convention, Holly and I spent the, most of the day at the South Dakota, or, I mean, at the ag taxation and equalization task force meeting, which was reviewing some of the suggestions we've had for clearing up 10-6-31.3. And we were pleasantly surprised that there was a turnaround in the attitude when the Legislative Research Council presented the information. It was the same information we had provided in our research of how other states handle it, their particular small ag operations. And, you know, the LRC presented the same thing, and it seemed to make a difference. So the result of that meeting was that LRC was directed to draft some legislation in part. They're going to look at contiguous. They're going to look at family gross income and how to redefine that so that it is actually fairer and more honest. They're going to look at timber and pulling that out of that list of principal uses that are annual crops and handling timber as it should be on its own. And they're very interested in how they handle it in Colorado law. Certainly, the group of people that researched this and worked on this for the last year and a half or two years have, we like the way Colorado does that, so, you know. I will contact the timber industry locally, though, just to make them aware of that. Subdivision. We don't, there was, that was a real difficult kind of part of the law for us to deal with, because it didn't quite seem like it should be there. I talked to Jay, and he's going to talk to LRC and see what, you know, what can be done with that. But I was really pleased, of course, to see it go forwards towards the legislature again. And so then, when we came back, I was able to say that on the part of the resolution of support from the SDACC. And they did pull that back off the table. They had tabled it, and it went through. So for me, it was a great convention. But I, we went to some really good things. I learned, you know, it's nice to go and actually learn something, and we learned some good things. Brian Mueller did a great job with JDAI. They had a panel up there. I thought that it was certainly something people were, in the smaller counties, not really getting, but it's been exposed to them now, and I think that it'll go forward. Of course, there's always the two big counties doing it, and they kind of wonder, well, how does that benefit me as a small county? But I think that the groundwork was laid well for that, for them to start considering it. So Holly, did you have?
You left out the best part.
Oh, I won a quilt.
Nancy was the big winner.
Yeah.
You won that quilt?
I won that quilt. They had a quilt made that commemorated the 100-year anniversary of SDACC, and I won it. And it's very, it's a beautiful star quilt, but what's really neat is that the lady stenciled all of the counties and their locations around the edge, and that's really pretty neat. And we'll hang it in the, in the new building. I kind of just could look at it for a while at my house, but I, we will put it in the new building, because it properly belongs there, so.
Very nice. Any other comments? The mention of the TIF, just so the rest of you know, Commissioner Busker and I are scheduled next Tuesday morning, 7:00 a.m.
For another?
For a TIF down toward the school mines, where all the yellow tape is. Pat Hall contacted me, and I met with him earlier this week towards the property. I don't know if he's.
He contacted me, yeah.
Anyway, I guess, items from the public.
Are you the public market?
Where's our leader?
Mr. Chair, just, a committee that I went to was the City-County Drug and Alcohol Programs Advisory Board met on September 4th, and one of the things that was presented was, of course, what the sheriff had been here and talked to us about was moving out of that Adams Street property and putting some out at JS, at the Juvenile Services Center, and some of it up at City-County Drug and Alcohol on La Crosse Street. Also, they talked about how the, and this has been historical with the state of South Dakota, but the State Division of Alcoholism signs contracts but doesn't pay enough money to actually provide the services that they're contracting for. And it not only affects us, Pennington County, but it affects all of the nonprofits that are out there trying to make a go on it, on this alcohol treatment programs. Hopefully, they reported that hopefully they are going to relook at those fees that are being paid to, to the contractors and make some adjustments. But frankly, if they don't, I mean, one of the things I always said when I was sheriff and that we started those treatment programs, if the treatment programs do not pay for themselves, then we ought to get out of the business. Pennington County's the only county that actually has a treat, that actually provides treatment. Otherwise, it's always picked up by nonprofits. And of course, what happens with the nonprofits, they go out and try to get community support and donations and stuff like that to keep them alive. Well, the county can't do that. And so, you know, hopefully, the state's going to step up to the plate, but I think if the state doesn't, you'll probably see the sheriff getting more and more out of the treatment programs, because you just, taxpayers shouldn't be supporting that aspect of it. As it relates to the Adams Street property, I think we ought to, the sheriff indicated that they were going to move out by the 1st of October up there, and so I think we need to put that on their agenda, what we do with that property, and so that we make some decisions on it. We don't want to leave it set empty for extended periods of time, because pretty soon the windows will be broke out and other types of things. So I'd like to see us put that on the agenda, maybe for next meeting, to be discussed and asked that, maybe buildings and grounds be here to talk to us about what they see the building is, and also have either Holly or Jay or somebody research what options the county has. I mean, if we're going to get rid of it, what do we need to do?
That's good. Just a thought, as you were just discussing the treatment thing, if they were going to move forward with liquor tax legislation, and the system was such that some of that liquor tax money could flow to the nonprofits through some system, it may be a way of engaging them in support of that legislation statewide to the extent that you'd kind of add numbers to your troops.
Sure.
A little bit. So you might give that some creative attention. Any other committee reports? Since, have you decided you're going to testify as items from public?
I think I'll wait till executive session.
I do have one, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I went to the Council on Aging, and they, the Canyon Lake senior citizens are trying to improve their kitchen out there, and they thought that maybe they'd have between Council on Aging who would give them some money, and themselves, they could fund it. It's about, they thought it was going to be a $2,000 or $3,000 project. Turns out, it's going to be a $6,000 project, and so they, they're really having problems coming up with the money. But there's some questions. So at the next meeting, they will be coming from Canyon Lake, because they weren't there, to explain exactly what they're trying to do, because we didn't know exactly, but it sounds like they're going to expand the kitchen and then basically have a restaurant open to the public. Well, there was some discussion, well, they're nonprofit, they can't do that. Well, yeah, they can, as long as the money flows to them. It's not how they make the money, it's where's the money go? So I think they can do that, but do we really need to fund the plumbing for a restaurant? So I told them I would come to the commission and see if there would be any interest in taking some contingency money, maybe $2,000 out of that, to give to Canyon Lake senior citizens, actually give to Council on Aging, and then through them, they'd give it to Canyon Lake. I don't, and if there's any interest in it, I will report back to you after the next meeting over there, and it might be such a thing that we, even the Council on Aging, doesn't like the idea. So, anyway, just an idea. I'm hoping somebody else is.
Just in terms of a comment, I pay my dues to.
I think you're still on a committee, actually.
Yeah, but I would suggest that it would be prudent to have anything that came to us come through the Council on Aging as opposed to an individual.
Yep, it will.
Setup, so.
And I can guarantee that Addy does not let one dime get through there without officially knowing where it's going.
Well, that's good.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I should have maybe mentioned something else. The Fire Service Board has been working diligently on looking at. The Fire Service Board has been working diligently on looking at our fire court administrators' job description and talking about what they need. And they are, they are getting close to kind of really finalizing what their, their focus is, what they need in that position. And I know they're going to give it to, to Nick to look at as well. And they will be bringing it to us in the next month or two. And, I mean, they have diligently looked at, well, we need somebody to do this, but we don't need that and that sort of thing. So I, I, they're putting a lot of work into it.
Good. Anything else?
I think a motion to go into executive session.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Bring a person in at a 2313. Effective January 1st.
Okay. And, and we don't need a name on that?
Carolyn Olson. I think since it's specific to that person, I guess you're right, we would need that and.
That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mark. Enjoy your tour of the jail.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.